All right, thank you for coming and joining us for this town hall meeting. We just wanted to get together to reiterate and discuss some of the expectations and some of the trends that we're noticing as we continue with our remote learning model. I am Mr. Paciana, I'm the math teacher and science teacher for six oh one and six oh two.
Maybe we should introduce ourselves. My name is Ms. Carr, I am the guidance counselor for grade six and seven.
I'm Ms. Lee, I'm the ELA and special education teacher for class six oh three and six oh five.
Hi.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Sorry.
That's okay, no, my name's Ms. Donzer and I'm the sixth grade ENL teacher.
My name is Mr. Mendez, I'm special education teacher for math and science for six oh three and six oh five.
Hi, my name is Ms. Nisha, I teach English for class nine thirteen and nine fifteen.
Hi, everyone, this is Ms. Jay, I'm the special education teacher for nine thirteen and nine fifteen.
All right, Mr. Paciana, there we go.
I assume they all know you and Mr. Duran?
Uh, yeah, I guess, everybody knows me, I'm Ms. Carr.
Hello, everyone, my name is Mr. Duran, I'm the voice on the phone. I'm the parent coordinator, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, Ms. Carr, go ahead.
So, the first thing we wanted to talk to you guys about is the schedule. School starts at eight thirty. And that is the time when kids log on and they're logging into their homeroom class. Homeroom lasts for about ten minutes and it's typically where the attendance is taken. Kids are greeted, you know, at the start of the day. And the, and homeroom lasts for, for ten minutes, like I said, between eight thirty and eight forty. At eight forty, they go into their first class. And that's typically either ELA or math. And they are in that class from, um, until nine twenty-five, when they would begin second period. Second period usually is a continuation of the same class, is that correct, Mr. Paciana?
Yeah, usually.
Mm-hmm, so, for the first three periods of the day, um, the students are typically in the same class, so they'll have, they'll go into their homeroom, which will be, uh, you know, either six oh one, six oh two with Ms. Harold, or six oh two with Mr. Paciana, six oh three with Ms. Driven and Mr. Mendez, and six oh five with Ms. Lee and Ms. Ortiz, or nine thirteen with Ms. Jay and Ms. Nisha. And then, um, at, at ten fifty-five, they would have their break for lunch. So, um, where we are encountering a little bit of a problem is that the lunch is about a half hour, forty minutes, and we see, we see a lot of drop-off after lunch. So typically, kids don't come back after lunch, which is a big problem for us. They, after lunch, they would go into their practice for the afternoon, and that may be either math or ELA, science or music or gym. And that class, uh, is the fifth period, it goes from eleven forty to twelve twenty-five. Then from twelve twenty-five to one ten, they would have another class, or they may have the same class. But then at one ten to one fifty-five, they would either have gym or music or art. And then they would go back to homeroom for about five minutes, and then they would be dismissed from homeroom at two o'clock. So that is our regular schedule every day. And so, as that says, it's important for the kids to attend every class, because that's the way that we account for them during the course of the school day. We are responsible for them from eight thirty to two o'clock. So, um, and attendance is taken at every class, so that the teacher can make sure that the child that was there in the morning is the same child that is there in the afternoon. Uh, work is assigned during every class, so they will have, um, Ms. Lee, can you explain how the work, what is the participation with the work during the class?
So in every class, each class is a little different, but usually there is a section where they lead, they, um, the lesson is guided by the teachers, and the work is assigned on Google Classroom, School for One. For ELA, they use Lightsale. For math, they use iXL, and if, this all happens during the class. So, that work is expected at the end of the class to be turned in, whether it is on School for One or on Google Classroom. Same thing for math, ELA, social studies, science. And that's the work that is assigned during class, and homework will also be given in class, so that they are aware what they have to finish after classes are over at two o'clock for the students.
Yeah, so any classwork, uh, any missing classwork, um, some teachers allow the kids to make up that work for homework, okay? Any questions about the schedule? No? Okay, good.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to point out, um, the homeroom at the end of the day. We do have, um, a number of kids that don't make it back to homeroom. Uh, maybe they don't realize that they have to check in with their homeroom teacher, because I don't have them seventh period. I don't see six oh two, for example, in the afternoon at all. So, when they come back for homeroom, that's important, that's when we give some announcements and some important information, and we go over the homework. That's what I use that time for, so make sure your child can understand that he needs to, he or she needs to make it back, just for that quick little wrap-up at the end of the day, because it makes a difference.
Okay. So, uh, attendance, so in, the attendance is taken two ways. For in-person, for that is the kids that have, um, that are coming to school during blended learning. And to, in order to be marked present, they have to be pre, um, physically in the building, in the classroom, okay? Um, if they're not physically there, then they're marked absent, I mean, that, that's pretty obvious. Um, on remote, they have to be present in the classroom for the homeroom teacher to see them, so they have to be on, online at eight thirty. And, you know, when we say online, we really need to be able to see them, because that is our accountability for their wellness and safety, that they're fine, that, you know, they've logged on. Um, because when we see an avatar or like, um, you know, a profile picture, it's really difficult for us to tell who's behind that profile picture. So we encourage the kids, please turn on your camera so that we can see you. You know, we, the homeroom teacher needs to see them at least, you know, for, you know, a, a, a period of time uh, during the class, so that they, the teacher can say, yes, I saw this child, yes, you know, and this child is present for today. Um, but, you know, a lot of times, kids come on and off camera. But, um, the, the other thing that is a problem is if the camera's not on, and then the teacher is calling out to the child, and the child's not answering. That becomes an issue for us, and then we're not sure if they're actually there or if they've walked away, or that, that the camera's just on with the profile picture. So that's why we really, really stress the importance of being able to see them. Now, um, what we do, we also have virtual cutting, which means that if the child was in the Zoom session in the morning, and then they disappear. For any reason, they don't come back after lunch, or, you know, the, the camera's off, and like the example I gave before, that the teacher's calling out to the child, but the child is not answering, you know, then, you know, the child, as far as the teacher is concerned, is missing. So, um, typically, when that happens, um, teachers will send a, a email, or they will call, and, or they'll text me, and then I'll call to try to, you know, to get an answer, like, you know, why aren't you on camera? Or I'll call the parent and let them know, you know, we're looking for your child, they were present in the morning, but then now they're not here. So can you tell me what's going on, what's happening?
Ms. Carr, there is a question in the chat, it says, how can we monitor daily participation? Is the attendance record available online?
The attendance record is not available online, but our attendance teacher, Ms. Costa, um, if there is any, like, really serious irregularity in the attendance, then she's gonna reach out to you. Um, the teachers let, uh, Ms. Harris, who is, who monitors our attendance, excuse me, she's in charge of attendance every day, so she will look to see, you know, what kind of trends we may see. So if your child is absent for a period of days, you know, obviously, we're gonna reach out to you. And we're gonna say, you know, we noticed, is the child sick? Um, you know, is, what's going on, because we haven't seen them, you know, for, for, you know, a couple of days. That's when you get a call from Ms. Harris, but on a daily basis, you're gonna get a call from the, the homeroom teacher. And the teacher's gonna say, hey, what happened, you know, we haven't seen you, you feeling all right, something going on? You know, because we are accountable for the children, and we have to make sure that we see the children every day, or that there's an excuse why we don't see the children every day, okay? So, I know that some parents feel like, you know, we're always calling, you know, like we're hassling you guys, but we're really, you know, we're just trying to make sure that our students are okay. Right, that is, that is our goal, it's not to give you guys a hard time, it's not. And I know some of you may be at work and you're leaving home, and you're thinking one thing is happening, and then we're calling you to tell you something else is happening. So, you know, that, it's a partnership. We need, we're calling you, we're reaching out to you to help us help your children. And we're only gonna reach out to you, you know, if it's like, you know, something's wrong, that we can't reach the child, okay? So that, that's our first objective, is to try to reach the child. Okay. Any questions for the attendance? And we take attendance every day, you know, several times a day, you know, we're always looking for the kids.
So, a parent asked about, should we call the school right away? And, um, you don't have to call the school, but it would be really nice if you could email the teachers, letting them know that your child will be absent that day, so we won't contact them, and we don't bother you with so many phone calls asking where your child is.
Yes, because a lot of us are on remote, but, you know, we are constantly, you know, we're at, at our computers, you know, before eight thirty in the morning. So if you know something, your child is gonna be out for the day, just email us and let us know, your child's gonna be absent for the day, or, you know, whatever's going on with you, so that we know, um, you know, we're not really, you know, worried about why the child is not in class.
Right, and the same goes for having tech issues, as it says at the bottom. Something's going on with the wifi or anything, and a kid gets kicked out of a meeting, or can't join, um, as long as you email the teacher and let us know that it's happening, so we can excuse it.
Yep. And if they're having tech issues, we have a, uh, help room, uh, where they can come in the morning, um, to be assisted by, uh, Mr. Duran or Mr. Ortiz, who is our IT specialist. And, um, that is, I'll put it on the chat, it's ms390.com, that is our website. And when they come on the site, they'll see, the first thing they'll see is a white box, it's outlined in, uh, red, and it says, if you're having problems, check here. And when they check that box, the three of us are there in the morning. I'm typically there in the morning with them, so that I can run interference if a child is having tech issues. I can get in touch with the teachers and say, you're, you know, so-and-so student is here in the help room with us, and we are trying to assist them to get back to class. And then once we do assist them, then I'll email, or I'll text the teacher again and say, okay, so-and-so student is done. You know, we provided them with whatever they needed, and they're on their way back to class, and then the teacher will text me, yes, Ms. Carr, they've arrived. So this way, I know there's no drop-off between the time they were with us in the help room and the time they made it back to class, so that's also our accountability, that, you know, think people are, you know, kids are where they, they belong.
Ms. Carr, can I ask something, please? I read that Fran Jay wrote, what if teachers don't usually respond to your email? Um, from my experience with six oh five and six oh three, um, when parents email us during instruction, it's very hard, because we're doing activity, we're teaching students. In our class, with Driven and I, we give our numbers every single day for parents. So in case this kind of scenario happens, immediately, if they text us, we're aware, then respond them, because that's the child on submit work, and they're like giving us all this work and also administration, email goes down throughout the day. So at the moment of instruction, it's hard for us to go and check an email. We're only doing during lunch and at two o'clock.
So also, um, if you, um, if the, if you reach out to the teacher and you don't hear back from the teacher right away, um, my time, I'm not in a classroom, so you can always reach out to me. Uh, I'll put my, uh, chocolate tone number on the chat, as well as my email, because I can respond to you a lot quicker than the teacher can. And typically, if I'm calling the teacher, they'll respond to me maybe a lot quicker, um, then they may be able to get to your email, okay? So we can, uh, you know, try to solve whatever the issue may be.
Hi, this is Anthony Bodie, so I just have a quick question back to the tech issues. Um, Anthony has an iPad from DOE, and when they, when he first started with, um, MS390, they, um, sent us a link for, um, Zscaler, which is, it, it enables the iPad to run off of the internet by itself. But my issue is with, I have to actually connect to my wifi in my house in order for the iPad to work. Should I just can, um, contact, um, tech support with, with that issue, or should I bring the iPad directly to the school?
All right, Mr. Duran, did you hear that question?
Yes, yes, you could bring the iPad to the school, it, it will be a lot quicker. Uh, you could pass by tomorrow, Mr. Ortiz and myself will be there, and we could fix it for you.
Okay, great, um, a, after two o'clock, because Anthony has school, so after two would be fine?
Uh, it, it will be from nine to two.
From, so he wouldn't be able to use the iPad for, take the iPad to the school? And how long does it take to be taken?
Do you, do you live in the area?
Yeah, I live, I live close by, yes.
Okay, so yeah, you could go by when, when class is finished, because the problem is that it will take like about an hour to fix it. So we're running into three and then four.
Okay, I mean, if you guys are willing to give me the time after two o'clock, then yeah, I'll drop, I'll drop by.
I'll guarantee you, I'll wait for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Okay.
All right. All right, so this slide is all about, um, how a class works. Um, when we were in person, it was much different. Um, the teacher would be in the room, and we would be able to, um, redirect the kids and make sure they stayed on topic, stayed focused. But since we're not actually physically with them, we need some help from, um, the people that they are with. Um, so these top two are the areas where you can help us out and try to get your child to be as suc, as successful as possible. Um, we already talked about, I don't know, being able to see the child, see their actual face. It helps to know, um, the kids that we are teaching. Make sure they're not in their pajamas and just sitting up in bed and turning their device on and checking into class that way. We want them to be prepared, we want them on time. So when we're ready to go at eight thirty, we expect them to be ready to go. Um, couple instances where kids are saying that their device isn't charged, so they're gonna have to leave the meeting. So if we can just make sure that they're charging when they're not in class overnight and plug it in at lunch. Um, this is the most important thing to me, is having a quiet space for the kid to attend class. An actual desk is help, is a good help if that's possible. But they need, they definitely need a space like they were in the classroom, where they can focus and concentrate on, um, the meeting or the class that's going on. Um, they should all have notebooks, in math, we have different tools that I'm encouraging them to get, like graph paper, rulers. They need to have that ready and available, so they're not walking away from the, from their class just to get those things. These bottom two are more about the kids themselves. Stay on topic, especially in the chats. Um, don't be afraid to ask questions, you know, that is the sacred time that you have with your teachers. Those are the best times to get your questions answered. And not interrupting, using the raise your hand button, keeping your mic muted, and trying to cut down on background noise is one of the things that I wanted to talk about. When a kid unmutes his mic and it's, and I can't hear the kid because of the background noise, um, we need to consider dedicating some kind of quiet space, where there's not a TV on and not too much distractions going on in the background, so that they can say their piece and discuss with the class and be engaged.
And can I say that, you know, it's, we understand that, you know, every home is different, and what we're asking for may be, um, you know, um, it may not be, you know, as feasible as we would like it to be, but we are looking to make the, the students as academically successful as possible. And the things that Mr. Paciana mentioned are the ideal, it's the ideal situation for us in order to be, to, to make sure that they are understanding and that they are engaging and that they can understand what, you know, what the, the teachers are, are, you know, teaching. Um, sixth grade math is a lot different from fifth grade math. There's a lot of topics that are introduced that the kids may have had a passing glance with last year, but are much more in-depth this year. So, um, the capability to understand and to really get it, I mean, I'm a, I'm terrible at math. Mr. Paciana is my go-to guy when I need to figure something out. And I've been in his class, and I've seen how, um, intricate the work can be. And I, you know, I'm amazed that these kids get it and that they're able to answer and they're able to follow along with him and that they are engaged, because I'm totally lost. So I can imagine, you know, if the, um, the learning situation is not as ideal as we would like it to be, in order for them to really focus and, and get what they need to get. So, you know, please do the best you can to make it, um, you know, as, as, you know, I guess, as school-like as possible. And we understand that some of you may have several children that are going to school at the same time, you know, remotely, we get it, you know, we really do. But, um, that's, again, it's the partnership. That's, that's part of the reason why we wanted to have this meeting with you tonight, to let you know, you know, what would be the most helpful to us while we're trying to teach your children, all right? Okay, Mr. Paciana. And there was a question on the chat, I just wanna let a parent know that I haven't forgotten, and I will address it. Um, so, don't, don't worry, I got you. All right, Mr. Paciana.
So another teacher speaking to this slide.
In Google Classroom, each teacher added the parent emails to the child's account, which means that you can get a weekly summary of that classwork for the child. So you can find out if the child submitted all the work, what homework assignments that child is missing or has completed, and that comes weekly for you. So, once we put in your invitation, what, once we put in your email address in the Google Classroom, you could get an invitation to your email. You will only get the summaries if you accept the invitation. So as this says, you have hundred and twenty days to accept the invitation before it expires. So if it, if you think that it expired, please send the teachers an email that you would like to get the invitation again, so you can get the weekly summaries.
So can I say about the summaries? Um, when you receive the summary, the summary will show you, um, the assignments, and it'll show you whether the assignment was turned in. It won't, um, tell you the grade, okay, so you won't be able to see the grade. And, um, the problem that, that some of the teachers are having is that, um, that the kids are, the students are turning in the assignment, but they're blank, okay? So that is not the case in, you know, it, it wa, it's a trend that we're starting to see. So when the parents get the summary on Sunday night, they're getting, oh, you know, my child did all this work? Oh my God, look, look how wonderful! But in actuality, and not in every case, but in actuality, what they're putting in is blank work, okay? So the teacher is sending the work back to the, to the student, saying, you know what, uh, this is blank. You need to redo it, and so then, you know, if they wanna get a grade. Um, teachers have different ways that they accept work in their classroom. Some teachers will just, you know, make a comment on the work and say, if you want a grade, you have to resubmit this work. Um, and I think that's the case overall, but some teachers send work back to kids, you know, not marked at all, and, and they, you know, it just, it hasn't been graded. So it, it's just, and it starts to pile up, because the way it looks to the parent is that the child has done all this work, but what the teacher actually sees is there's no work. So, um, does one, somebody else wanna talk, speak to that, please?
Oh, I would like to add something to that. Um, we have to be cautious also, because when we give it back to the student and then they resubmit it, this only several times they could resubmit it. Like, if they do, I don't think, more than three resubmit an empty work, we no longer are able to return the work, it just stays like that. So we have to be cautious of that, that they could only resubmit only, I don't, I believe it's no more than three times.
For work completion, um, like Ms. Lee said earlier, assignments are given every day, and the expectation is to do the assignment that's given during that class timeframe. And they have time to complete it after school for homework if they didn't finish it. Um, the way that we give our assignments, um, and I'll speak on nine thirteen and nine fifteen, we set it up so that the assignment is doable for that class period or class day. The goal is to get, you know, get them to retain that information and to gain the skill that they need for the day. Um, and then the homework, most in our, in most cases, is that it's separate, it's additional. Um, homework can also be iXL, like, iXL tests and like so reading periods. During ELA, and this is for every ELA period, every ELA class, there's a time, there's a block of time in which we dedicate, um, light fail reading. But after the class, the school day, we also expect students to read during, you know, during their after-school time, so that they can bring up their reading level. Um, students have independent work time during the period, uh, to do their assignment as well. Like, I'm being a little redundant, but like Ms. Lee said, there, we break up the lesson, so that there is a portion in which we're teaching, in which we're speaking lecture style. Then there's a portion in which we model the work, and then that independent work time is the chunk of their, of the assignment that they're given. And finally, if they need extra support, they can also join a Dreamyard After School program. Um, I'm not all too sure about the details in terms of virtually for this year, but I do know that we have, that, that's the, the title of our after-school program, is called Dreamyard. And finally, uh, we have after-school hours from two o'clock until two twenty. Some teachers may extend that timeframe, um, and it's based off of conversation to conversation. But that's the entirety in terms of work completion and what we expect.
All right, so grading. Um, on November nineteenth, we are going to have a parent-teacher conference. Um, before that, uh, you're gonna receive a progress report. The progress report will not contain any number of grades, it's gonna be just basically a checkoff that's descriptive, that tells you how that, uh, your student is doing, you know, overall. And it'll cover all four academic classes. Um, you will receive a virtual report card, and that, that is, it means that it'll be, um, available to you through the I, um, the my, my student account, so it'll come to you. And that will be issued on December twenty-second, right before we go on Christmas break. And that's really going to speak to, you know, their progress, what they've done from September until, uh, December, and also their readiness for the next grade. So that's what we're gonna be measuring, um, for that, uh, course of time for the first marking period. It's typically thirteen weeks that we do that measurement in. Um, so the progress report, um, to give you an indication of what you should see on the report card, okay? So that's, please be on the lookout for those. We will, please make sure that your teachers have all of your email addresses, parent email addresses, so that the, uh, progress report can be sent directly to. so that the, uh, progress report can be sent directly to you. The, um, report card you'll be able to obtain through the My Student, uh, portal, through the DOE, okay? Now, or one, let me, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Pacquiana, let me just mention one other thing. Um, this is not so much a problem in this grade. Um, but I just want to mention it, um, anyway. I want to talk about academic integrity, okay? Um, what that means is that kids, sometimes they copy and paste information either from one another or off the, off a website. And what they do is they present it to the teacher as their own work. And that in, is called plagiarism, right? We do not, we totally discourage, totally discourage plagiarism. Um, the idea of learning is to be able to take in information and process that information and then be able to give that information back in your own words. So, um, ELA is, um, not as, as, uh, what can I say? It's not as right and wrong as math. Math is something you either have the right answer or you don't. Um, and there is a process how you get to the right answer. But in ELA, that information is based on the reading and how, you know, you interpret the reading and how you're able to, uh, in, you know, internalize the reading and then give the information back to your teacher. We do not want to see kids copying information off the internet. We want to be able to think that, you know, that they're able to think on their own. We are trying to develop, um, executive skills. And part of executive skills is being able to process information. So I just want to mention that, um, and we are on the, you know, if it does turn up, that, um, assignment or that plagiarized document will receive an automatic zero, okay? There's no, there's no coming back from that, alright? Okay, Mr. Pacquiana.
Alright, these are some of the things that, um, we noticed and we don't want them to start becoming larger issues. Um, some students are logging in late. Um, so what you can do to help that out is make sure they go to bed at an appropriate time the night before, so they're ready to wake up to their alarm and be ready out of bed at eight thirty when they join us. If possible, make sure the student has a suitable space, preferably not their bed, to study and do their work. Or they can avoid interruptions, unnecessary noise, background noise like a television or loud music. Um, try to get them to stay in the works, in their workspace like they would in a normal class. How to stay in class to be engaged. And headphones are excellent idea so that they can tune out all the background noise and really, um, respect their own concentration for that.
Especially if you have two children in the house, both learning at the same time. Whenever I ask the student to unmute, I see here the other teacher from the other Zoom through our meeting. So if you have multiple children in the house during remote learning, it will be the best if they can have their own earphones, headphones to listen to ours. And if it has a microphone attached, they'll be the best.
A very valuable investment.
Yes.
Alright, we are in November, so past two months have been riddled with logging in concerns, getting onto Zoom, getting onto Google. If their iPad is not charged, that's a simple solution. Just please make sure they have it charged and ready to go before they start their school day. Um, of course, the MS three ninety help desk, you can find that through the website if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, but our goal is to get every kid logged in every school day.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Pacquiana, can I expand on that?
Absolutely.
Hello, parents, how are you? Um, first, I would like to just, uh, piggyback on the headphones thing. Please don't get involved in the, I need, I need, um, AirPods because they don't need AirPods. They could have one of those five, ten dollar headphones and that would do the job. Uh, second, the help desk is at the website, ms390.com. And, uh, all you gotta do is just click on the, on the little pop up there. Also, we put another app, Enable, on the, on the tablet. Is, uh, is a figure of a little, a little head with a microphone like this. This one, um, I'm very bad with colors, so with this one, that is, uh, I think reddish.
Blue and pink.
Bluish. Yeah, so you click on the, on the one that, that looks more like blue, that's me, and the other one is Ms. Phoe. So you click on that, it will take you straight to a Google Meet where, uh, one of us is gonna be at the other side. And it's a lot easier because we could share the screen, we could send out codes, we could send out, uh, links. Uh, leave the phone calls for last, as the last resort. Because it's very difficult to give one of those links through, through a phone call. It's, it's best to do it through the Google Meets like this or an email where we could, um, exchange other information. So the little square that you saw there, that is something temporary, but if you scroll down, uh, I think whoever is managing the, the presentation issue, if you scroll a little bit down, you will see the information there again. We started all the way to eleven o'clock, but we were there until two, uh, till all the, the whole day.
Yeah, we were there all day.
And one of the fastest ways is right down here, the chat that we were talking about. Send a message, they'll get it right away and respond as quickly as possible. So any logging in issues, issues with Zoom, your DOE accounts, we can resolve that right there. Alright, any other comments on this slide?
Cover it, yep.
Okay.
So some of the other trends that we're seeing in the classroom is that we see students on their cell phones while they're in class. Um, I have a lot of students telling me, my mom's calling me, my aunt is calling me, my cousin is calling me. So if you could, please, um, if you're not getting phone calls from a teacher that they're not logged in, please do refrain from calling them, um, during class. If you can shoot them a text message and they can get back to you when they have a break or during their lunch period, that will be the best. And of course, if there's an emergency, you can definitely call them and get in contact with them. But it would be best if you can have the student put the phone away somewhere, uh, somewhere else while they are in the classroom. Recently, we've had, we've been having a lot of parents or students leaving early from class. So I am aware that it's time for flu shots, it's time for regular checkups. But we do ask that, if you could, please schedule the doctor's appointments to be after school. And if the appointments cannot be scheduled to be a time that's after school, you email us so that we are aware that the child is not going to be there. And if you can, please submit a doctor's note to the school or to the teachers, if you don't know, our attendance teacher's email, so that we can forward it to the attendance teacher, Ms. Acosta, so that your child's absence will be excused. Ms. Tangza, do you want to take the last one?
Yes, um, so remote learning practices, right? So with these practices, it's very important that, you know, the students have the lights on in the room. Sometime, you know, we see that they're in a room and it's completely dark and we can't see the student well. Also during class, please sit at a desk or a designated, a designated spot in the house away from distractions. So this way, you know, they're si- sitting seated up, you know, they're not laying down. When you're seated up, you could focus more, um, on what you're learning. Also, you know, if they're relaxed and they're laying down or they're more comfortable, they could easily get distracted and that will prevent them from focusing and doing their work.
Or falling asleep.
Falling asleep too. Respect your child's need to concentrate. So when they're learning, you know, maybe don't ask them questions about something not related to schoolwork. And, you know, just let them focus on what they want to do.
Yes, especially lunch, if you could have it prepared so that they can eat during the lunchtime, not after lunch. I have students telling me they need to eat after lunch when it's class time, that they have not eaten during lunchtime. So if you can have something prepared or if your child could, if you can train your child to get lunch quickly during the lunchtime, that would be awesome. Any questions on this slide?
Basically, it comes down to ask the kids, asking themselves, would I be doing this if I was in school?
Right.
Alright, so communication is the most important thing during remote learning. Um, of course, it's a new system that we're all still adjusting to, but we're getting the hang of it. And that's why the most important thing is to communicate between parents, teachers and students, all three parts. Um, so please check your emails daily for notifications from us. This is our primary form of communication, that's what the teachers go to first is emailing. Um, remember to accept your Google Classroom invitation. And remember what Ms. Carr said about how you read that weekly update, you know, talk to your kid about it. Talk to them about the assignments, um, don't just see if they are handing them in, but actually ask them what they learned. Teachers are available, two o'clock to two twenty every school day. And as always, MS three ninety is always there for you, ms390.com.
Mr. Pacquiana, um, let me just address one thing that, um, a parent wrote on the chat about, um, teachers not responding to emails. And, um, I know that, um, sometimes, you know, teachers get busy and and they miss your email. Um, if, and I want to just offer, um, my own self, if you email your teacher and your teacher hasn't responded to you within a day or so, please email me. And I will, um, you know, um, be your advocate for whatever the situation is and be able to get in touch with that teacher and make sure that, you know, we can address your concerns. Um, please don't let several days go by or, you know, a week go by and you may not have heard from the teacher because trust me, you know, they get really a lot of emails every day. So if you send an email on Monday and they haven't responded to you on Tuesday, it's because Monday they got a lot of emails and then Tuesday they got a lot of emails and they may have missed it. But, um, like I said, I'll put my talkatone number, you can always text me or you can email me and I will, um, you know, be your advocate with that teacher, whatever your concern may be, alright? Here are, these are the email addresses of all of the teachers in grade six as well as myself and Ms. Phoe, who is the other guidance counselor. Um, so if you need to reach out, but I will put my email and my phone number on the chat. Please, uh, copy it down and reach out to me if I can be of service to you.
What I do with IXL is, um, I give them a topic. Um, it's not necessarily that all three skills are due in the same day. I know that, you know, this is taking time and what I do is I sign, I give them about a week to just explore through the topics. Um, I'll go ahead and talk to the kids tomorrow to make that clearer, that they shouldn't be overwhelmed with homework. And if they are struggling, IXL does give recommendations for previous skills that will help them get up to that level. Um, but they should not be spending more than twenty to thirty minutes on a subject. Um, like I try to limit it to twenty to thirty minutes just for math or after school. Just as a refresher of what they learn so they can be prepared to move on to the next step tomorrow. Um, so IXL shouldn't be that much. Um, but I'll talk to the kids tomorrow and I'll get a sense of how they're feeling and what kind, what level of challenge they're up to, if it's too much or just the right amount or too little, and we can differentiate between the kids. But just to know that going forward, when I make an IXL assignment, I give them about a week to explore the different skills that are all related. So I'll remind them tomorrow, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Yes, Ms. Carr, just have a comment in, I just wanted to, um.
What do you name, Mr. Mercedes?
Yes, personally thank the, the parents for, um, turning their home into an instructional environment. It's not what you guys, the, your home is not intended to be an instructional environment, but yet you guys are making it work and I thank you immensely for that. And, and so for us, you know, is, you know, it's not what we wanted, we didn't want to see you guys this way. Uh, especially the sixth graders, uh, because they're coming into us for the very first time. And coming to us like this is, is so, sort of, we are in a, in a deficit because uh, it is not the best way and it's not what our teachers are used to, right? Uh, and they're making their best, you know, the best that they can with the circumstances that they have. And so hopefully, you know, the unfinished, you know, learning, uh, that took place in the fifth grade, hopefully, uh, we're able to at least, at least close the gap. And so that when we all come in person, because we definitely, you know, we'll get through this and we all, we're coming in person, that, you know, the un, the gap, that we will be able to reduce the unfinished learning gap. And so that's, for me, that's a critical point. Because one of the things we're doing, we're trying to do is get them ready for the next level. You know, when they come in as sixth graders, our focus is, is how do we get them prepared? Uh, to take the, eh, you know, the, the test, right? They, we all, we all want to, we all want them to have a chance to take that specialized high, a high school test. And so that's what we, we strive for as a school, uh, to give everyone in our school uh, the opportunity regardless of their condition, right? The chance to say, you know what, I was able to take the test, um, for the specialized high school exam and this is where I, I placed. And so that's what we were, we're all about at three ninety, but I, I just felt, you know, uh, it's bad because, you know, we, we're, we couldn't receive you in person the way that we always planned with sixth grade. But hopefully we will make this things up next year. Uh, and hopefully this pandemic, um, you know, we all keep ourselves safe. And, and so when we come back in person, we can come back and, and, and begin to, to really address, you know, where the kids need to be. So I just wanted to thank you and, and, and from the bottom of my heart, didn't want to meet you this way, but we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that when we all come back, we'll have, you know, the, the time and space for you guys. The DOE is preparing all schools, uh, to make sure that the devices, all of the devices are, have been disseminated that, um, you know, and for us, you know, we wear zero, right? Um, but there is a possibility that, uh, the school is going to move into a hundred percent remote uh, after Thanksgiving, uh, because of the, the pandemic. Um, it's, it's right now, the branch is at four percent and rising. Uh, city is at two point five percent and, um, what the, the governor and mayor had stated was that if it's, uh, above three percent for seven straight day, then they're going to, uh, shut down the schools.
Nope. Thank you for that information.
Any other questions before we come to the end of this meeting?
If I may, just say something that my email was missing on the slide. So I just, I see parents here that I don't usually get, you know, we do parents' meeting every two weeks. Uh, the next one will be December second, uh, in English and December third in Spanish. So my email is Jade Duran, let me write it on the chat, at ms390.com.
Jade Duran at ms390.com, it's there.
Yeah, please quick, Mr. Duran.
Leo, you're the greatest, thank you everybody for coming.
Yes.
Ms. Diaz, did you have a question? I saw you on muteing.
Um, yes, I have a question about the reading that they have to do online. How can we secure that they are reading what they have to, because my daughter tells me, oh yeah, I read, but I don't really be believing her.
So, in terms of light sail, what they should be reading is depending on their lexile level, which is another word for their reading level. So I kind of explained it in the chat, it's a lot of words, but if you go on their dashboard, there's three lines on the left side, if you click on it, it gives them an whole option. Under a circle that looks like our profile, there should be a number, that is your child's reading level. And when you click on each book, going to show you a lexile level, so it should say like six thirty L, that's the reading level of the book. And when you click on each book, going to show you a Lexile level, so it should say like six thirty L, that's the reading level of the book. So we only recommend that they read about hundred Lexile level above their level so that they can grow and they're not reading a book that they really cannot understand. So as they go up to the Lexile level, they'll have access to more books.
Gwen, can I cut you off for a second? I think also too, um, if you want to check to see if she actually read for the day as well, you can just have her show you the amount of minutes she read. And typically, at minimum, the kid will read thirty minutes to forty-five minutes during the school day. And sometimes, like, we encourage them to read afterwards. And the kids can see how many minutes they read, right? So if you want to just, you want to fact check her to see if she actually read, make her show her your minutes. Okay, okay, thank you, that's right. Make sure if they said like completed, like if they finished reading and will say like, oh, completed, this is red. They'll show you the amount of time they've, so that's, that's good, thank you. Yeah.
Sorry, on the dashboard, that's when you first, that's the page that you first see when you log in. There should be a small calendar and that shows them how many minutes they've read. So Lightsale has us, like, they have an algorithm to count the minutes that's actually, that the students are actually going through the book. So that's why they have those green boxes, which are closed responses, the vocabularies. So they count, they have an approximate time of, if this child is in sixth grade, at this reading level, they should be reading at about this many words per minute. And through those types of algorithms, they only count the minutes that they actually think the child is reading. So unless the child is actively reading, flipping through the pages at the right speed, they're not going to count those minutes. So you can trust them that's showing on the calendar.
That's what I wanted to say, because with the option with light sale, they give them that speed button. And my son tends to speed it, like, he makes it go like really fast, so it just, yeah, it does tell them to slow down, like if they're not going at the pace that he's supposed to be going.
Right, if you go to their polio page, it shows all the books that they've read. Some of them, it shows this book was read too fast. So they don't give credit to, to that book in a way because they know you probably read it too fast, you don't probably have a full understanding of it. So that's some ways that Lightsale makes it, make sure that the students are reading. So Life Sale and IXL, if you take advantage of it, I've only seen the good sides of it with the students in my previous years. You can only grow from it if you use it the right way. So please do make sure that the children are using Light Sale and IXL after school if you can. Thank you.
Make an announcement. Uh, so one of the things we're trying to do, and I think, um, we are going to be successful at it just because, uh, we've been in contact with the, the folks at Light Sale, uh, for them to do a workshop for parents. And so we're going to, um, probably be doing it in December. Uh, once I have the date, uh, we're gonna, um, Mr. Duran will know, um, probably before I will. But, um, we're gonna make sure that we, um, publicize this so that, um, it's going to happen on a Wednesday uh, when we have our, usually every other, every other week, we have a meeting with, with families. And so that is going to, we're gonna dedicate that meeting towards that, um, that workshop for, for light sale, for, for families. And that's gonna be, you know, uh, may, uh, either the first Wednesday, uh, in December or the second Wednesday in December.
All right. And anything else, um, before we say goodnight to everybody? Thank you, and we appreciate you guys for, um, coming out to our meeting tonight and spending your time. We want to make sure that, you know, everybody knows that, you know, this is a partnership, so we're in this together. Our goal is to make your children successful. So, you know, our time is your time. So we are available, you know, to, to make sure that things happen the way they should. So if there's, uh, no more questions, you, you have all of our email addresses. I gave you my talkatone phone number if you need to reach out to me. We want to thank you very much and please look out, um, for the progress report and information about our upcoming, um, parent teacher conferences.
Thank you, goodnight.
Goodnight, thank you.
Goodnight, everyone.
Thank you, goodnight.